I would call the January, February, February 15th meeting, boy, time flies. The Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals to Order, my name is Ken Foreman, I'm his current chair. And let me begin by asking you all, please, to silence your cellphones if you haven't already done that, and introduce the board. So from your left, we have Jerry Potamus, who's an associate member of the board, TJ Hurry, who's vice chair of the board, Ed Van Kuren, who's a voting member of the board, and tonight will be our acting clerk, because Kim Bealan, who is normally the clerk, is absent, Paul Murphy, voting member of the board, and Robert Dugan, who's an associate member of the board. So as I'm sure many of you know, the zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town of Falmouth and considering requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided by those bylaws which have been approved by town meeting in the attorney general's office for the commonwealth. And so our goal is to hear full and fair testimony from the applicants and from the public, and allow discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. So our process goes like this, to begin each hearing, we'll ask the clerk and Ed to read a public announcement of the hearing and present any relevant information from the files, for example referrals, or summarize correspondence. And then we'll ask the applicant's representative to present a description of the project. That's limited to 15 minutes, it can be extended by the vote of the board, but usually 15 minutes is sufficient. And then the board will question the applicant or their representative, and after we've gotten answers to our questions, we'll open it up to the public and invite public comment. So if you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized by the chair, and then go to the podium and state your name clearly for the record, so we can get that on our minutes. And then we do ask that the public comment be limited to two minutes. Again, if you need extra time, just ask. Please indicate whether you're in favor, opposed, or if you just have a question, and direct your comments solely at the project, don't make any remarks about the applicant and so forth. If the board feels we have enough information, we'll close the hearing and render a vote. We may decide we'd like some additional information, in which case we can continue the hearing, and we'll announce a date certain in the future when the hearing will be continued. And then we'll have, of course, board discussion and vote for special permits, a four-to-one supermajority is required for affirmative vote. Okay. So tonight, we have one continuation and five new hearings. And the first item on the agenda here is continuation of 099-17, which is Maguire 38 Worcester Court.
And who will be sitting, Mr. Chair?
Sitting on this, I guess, oh, Kim Bealan was on this, and we're going to ask Rob to fill in for her, so she's absent.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jonathan Pallone for the applicant. We are here with a revised proposal. And just to kind of re-familiarize you with the project, this is a lot that's undersized at 9,900 square feet, it's in the RC zoning district, and it falls within the protections of 240-69, proposing here to exceed the lot coverage by 23.8 percent. While the lot itself is non-conforming, the house that is on the lot is conforming with all setbacks. It was originally a little closer to the street, and with the new construction, now conforms to all the zoning setback requirements. One other thing that I want to mention is just that while it's close to the little pond, coastal pond overlay, this property is actually outside of that overlay. I think that, just in terms of the septic requirements, that's worth noting. The garage that we've revised here is slightly larger, 25.5 feet by 20 feet, and the reason why it's a little bit larger is because the stairs are now enclosed inside the structure. So that eliminates, I think, one of the primary concerns of the neighbors is being able to see people down the stairs by the property line. The door's also been moved to the south-facing side of the garage, so it's on the house side, so people will be going in and out of that door, they won't be walking around the back. The height's still 18 feet. Inside, it's a pretty open office space, has a half bathroom, the north side of the building. And in designing the structure, attention was paid in trying to get the design of the garage to match the design of the house, which is why it has the dormers on the roof that are kind of pitched in a certain way, and actually, when you compare the footprint of the first floor to the second floor, it's brought in a little bit to match the design of the house. I think a different design would lend itself to creating a little bit of dissidence, wouldn't be compatible with what we're trying to achieve. Also, previously submitted some photographs of two-car garages in the neighborhood, and I subsequently went out and took pictures of garages that have additional living space or additional space above the garage.
Those to the clerk.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
I believe those are in the file, are those what we spoke about, Jonathan?
There are some additional ones. So what all of those photographs show is other properties within this area that have two-car garage, I think there's one that is a one-car garage, but they all have a full second story above, and they're pretty much matched the shape. And that just goes to show that what we're proposing fits within the neighborhood, it's something that, there are other examples in the neighborhood. Looking at the bulk calculations, there's at least six neighboring properties that have structures that are two-story, and there's five properties that have a total square footage of structures that is either 2,000 square feet or close to that, which is similar to what we're proposing. So I think that what's being proposed is within character, it's allowed by the bylaw, and we're asking for your approval tonight.
Okay, let's see if there's any lingering questions from the board before you leave.
Right, just one thing to add is that we did also put two trees on the property line to further address any concerns with visual impacts to the neighbors, so there's two cedar trees that are on the plan.
So does the board have any follow-up questions for John?
No questions.
Okay. Let's see if there's any additional public comments, something new, we heard about your concerns last time, but if you have something new.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. We appreciate the changes, Michael Coyne, 48, the re-rebutting owner. We do appreciate the changes made by the Maguires to address many of the issues discussed at the January 18th meeting. The remaining issue is a request by the board to address the bulk of the building, which was brought up by ourselves and also a couple of the members. The new plan, as I read it, I don't feel addresses that issue as requested. In fact, the new plan actually increases the size of this two-story, originally 20-by-22 foot building, to a 20-by-25 and a half foot building, again, two stories. The original plan made no provision for garage or additional living space, as had been in the original building, which is the option of the owner, I understand that. It's my opinion that the need of the garage and additional space should have been considered as an integral part of that new home project, and not now a segmented project as it's now become. I believe to allow a building of two-story accessory structure with living space on this lot, which already contains a newly-built substantially-sized house, will have an overwhelmingly detrimental impact on the use and enjoyment of our property as well as our neighbors' property. The project is simply too big for the surrounding neighborhood, which is made up of undersized lots. It will tower over our home and our yard, as well as our neighbors' homes and yards. And the initial concerns would be negative visual impact, a reduction of air circulation, additional noise generated by a proposed exterior HVAC system, parking issues, depending upon what the use of the upstairs of that garage would be, and there were some septic concerns, but I believe that was addressed the last time. And then, on the plan as submitted, this suggestion that the door would be on the south side of the building, the plan, as I see it, has the door on the north side of the building. I have to believe that's just a mistake on somebody's part, but I have to bring that to the board's attention if you hadn't yet noticed that. And again, I don't think the petitioners have addressed a bulk issue that was raised. Recommendations were made to maybe move it forward, no, it can't go forward, well, now it's being put forward three and a half feet to accommodate a redesign of the stairs. And again, the overall bulk is not consistent with this neighborhood. I don't know what the pictures are that council references, but there are some newer homes in the area on larger lots that do have two-car garages attached, but nothing similar to this particular area. So again, I state our opposition, I ask you not to approve the plan in its present form, and I thank you for your time.
Anything else?
May I be permitted to respond?
Of course.
The only thing that I'd like to say in concern to parking is that this is going to, I think, alleviate any parking issues by having a garage, having cars put in there, you should deal with that. In terms of views, I think the bylaw is pretty clear that the views that are of concern are from public ways, and this is situated in the back lot. It is true that we're dealing with a slightly larger structure now in order to enclose the stairs, but it's not any wider in terms of what you're looking at, it's the same distance. And so the reason why those changes there is to address the concerns that have been raised.
Can you address the issue of where the door is?
It's on the south side.
This is the street view. What this is, is looking north. It says north view because it's looking north, this is actually the south-facing side of the building.
Towards the house, towards the water.
Towards, yes.
Okay, and you showed the two cedars, is there any specification as to the size of those?
I think just a tree that you would get at the nursery, an average-sized tree. It's going to have to kind of grow into place, but it's going to be positioned in between the existing trees that are on Coyne's property to kind of fill in that space.
Okay, so if we specified some caliper for the size of the trunk, that's usually how they're sized, I'll give you some guidance.
Sure.
Okay, anything else?
Is there an AC unit on the garage?
No, I think we addressed that before, it's going to be a split, there's not going to be any noise from that, a limited split.
Okay, does the board feel like they have enough information? Certainly, this is a significant modification to the original plan we saw.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I concur, I think it's a much better plan. The changes were made to benefit the neighbors, if I remember correctly, the stairs and things like that.
I think moving the stairs inside is a big thing from a safety point of view.
It's more aesthetic, too.
Yeah.
So if you feel you've heard enough, we could certainly have a motion to close.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, moved and seconded by Paul and Ed, all in favor? Aye. Okay, now, what is the feeling of the board with respect to approval or not?
I think it's approvable. I'm in favor of it based on these most recent modifications.
Okay, want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the garage as currently proposed.
And is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, so again, Paul and Ed, moved to, in favor, and Paul, you want to make some findings?
I haven't really thought of any, I might jump in at a later date, at a later time. Anyone else have any good ones?
Are we correct that the only non-conformity is in lot coverage?
The lot coverage is the only non-conformity, yes.
Right.
And the applicant was amenable to moving the stairs and revising the plan?
Right, maybe we want to make a finding that they've added additional screening in the form of trees, and moved the stairs inside. And that they've presented some evidence of comparable-sized structures in nearby lots. And then, do we want any conditions?
It's per plan.
Per plan, yeah.
No cooking, no beds.
Can you guys wait just one second?
Yep.
I don't do shorthand anymore.
We like to keep you on your toes.
Oh, thanks, you should have been here earlier. So, no?
No cooking facilities and no beds?
It's not a bedroom.
So I think there's, I believe there was testimony at the last hearing that there was no intent to have this as a bedroom, so that should be a finding.
Right, could add that to the findings as well. And do we want to specify some minimum caliper for the cedars?
No cooking facilities.
What do we do, usually, three inches or something?
We don't know what the existing ones are.
There's nothing there.
There's nothing there, they're going to add.
Oh, they're going to fill in between them.
Between the butters, I mean, usually you guys do like a six-foot, you can do, so tired of everybody's, you want to do a Leland Cypress or something, leave it up to them.
Well, I mean, if they say cedars, I think cedars are fine.
All right, six foot?
Six foot.
Six foot, three.
How fast do cedars grow? Leland Cypresses grow fast.
Leland Cypresses do grow fast.
Do cedars grow fast?
Not as fast as Leland Cypresses.
So...
Let's go with Leland Cypress.
There's a six-foot fence existing.
Yeah, well, put it to Leland Cypresses, that'd be fine.
That's it. What's the, other than growing, is there anything else of concern with the two Cypresses?
No, I have a bunch of them.
With Cypresses?
Doing great.
Oh, no, no, why not?
On my property.
Okay, so do we want, do we want a size of the cedars or whatever?
Six foot.
Or Cypress, what are we doing, let's not get...
Well, they're specifying cedars, okay, we'll go with what they specify.
Okay, so you want a six-foot cedar?
Sure. I would like to suggest that you allow them to pick the type of cedar.
Sure.
We didn't specify a cedar, we just said cedar, like it shows on the plan.
Size was talking about. Oh, no, I thought they were going into a Leland type.
You just don't want them to come out with a bucket like this.
No.
Right?
So it's a six-foot cedar?
There you go.
Is there anything else?
I can't think of anything.
Okay, are we ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for making some changes to accommodate the concerns of your...
Thank you.
Okay, our next hearing is 115-17, Lloyd, 64 Shoreview Avenue in East Falmouth, special permit to construct a garage addition with habitable space above. And lot coverage is over 20 percent.
So...
240-69E, yes.
Yeah, do you want to designate an alternate to sit, please?
Okay, so let's have Jerry's on this one, since Rob did last one.
Okay. So, you have to read it into...
Oh, we need an announcement, yes, I'm sorry.
Has to read it into record and do referrals. Is there a game on tonight or something?
There's always a game.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11, Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Law, you are hereby notified that Paul E. Lloyd of Northboro, Massachusetts, applied for a zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to construct an attached garage position with habitable space above, decreasing lot coverage over 20 percent on the subject property known as 64 Sherwood Avenue, East Falmouth, Massachusetts.
Short view. Okay.
And? Standard comments from the Department of Engineering and no comments from the rest.
Okay.
And there's one letter with no objections.
Okay, and for the applicant?
My name is Paul Lloyd, I'm the owner of 64 Shoreview Avenue, the current home is a single-story ranch. I'm here tonight seeking your approval to construct an addition which consists of a 24-by-21 foot garage with an office above the garage. The lot size is 10,086 square feet at the corner of Shoreview and Irvingburg. The proposed setbacks for the addition are 26.3 feet in front and 20.7 in the side. I understand this is allowed under the Falmouth setback requirements. The proposed addition will increase the lot coverage to 22.28 percent of the lot area. I also have a proposed small increase to the width of my steps off the back deck. The height of the proposed structure will be 22 foot 3 inches, which is approximately 4'10" above the current height on the existing structure. If approved, this addition will make it more suitable to make this my permanent home in the future for myself and my life. I believe I've covered the basics of the project, and I'm open for any questions.
Okay, very efficient. Let's start with, Robert, see if you have any questions.
Just the, so what would the bedroom count be with the addition?
I currently have a three-bedroom home, I don't, I'm using this for an office space.
Just for an office space? That's all I have.
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
I believe engineering mentioned drywells, are there any proposed for the project?
There is, there's two on the side.
And you also have a shed on the property, will that be remaining?
It will be.
Okay. That does it for me, thank you.
I have no questions.
So the stairs basically will be coming in off what is now the dining room?
They are, the stairs are on the inside of the garage.
And they go down as well to a basement, is that correct?
No, they go down to the landing when you...
Ah, okay, so that's just three steps down to the patio.
Exactly.
And that's on a slab?
It will be on a garage slab.
Yeah, okay, now I understand. All right, I think that probably does it for board questions at the moment, let's see if there's any public comment.
Hi, Susan Rafferty, I'm on 47 Irving, and I'm, we're the house behind you, we just, my sister and I...
Again, address your comments to the board, we're the ones that vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I've been on boards, but anyway, so we now own the house that is at 47 Irving, so it's kind of catty-corner to their house. We are really the only house in the area that will lose some view because of this. I, you know, we're not going to stop anyone, obviously, from building on their own property, but I just wanted to state that we were aware that this was going to change our view of the water. And this is, this is a house that's been in the family about, since 68, so 50 years now. And we just want aware of this until we got the letter.
All right.
And I think there are some houses in the area that are over the 20 percent. You're allowed to have up to 25 percent?
By special permit, yeah.
By special permit, right, after that, no more. Okay, all right, well, I just wanted to state that, that was, we were aware of it and had some concerns, but I understand it's not a very big garage by most standards, so...
Right.
And that was it.
Okay, we appreciate the input.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Dan Foley, and I have residence at 51 Cooper Road, which is, you know, I can see the house, and similar with your concern, we will lose a view of the Martha's Vineyard sound, and just want to state that, you know, I think that having that structure there will affect the character of the neighborhood. My wife's family has been in that neighborhood since the 70s, and adding that structure there, I believe will be out of character, and we don't want to overbuild in that area, similar to other neighborhoods, and that's my concern, so...
There is some calculations in the file that the staff did showing how many houses are one-story, one and a half, two stories in the general area.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, to the applicant, actually, and I don't know what the applicant knows. So usually when we go over, what's your current lot coverage?
10,000.
You know, percentage-wise, again, if you have to answer.
17.28. I'm sorry, would you be questioning me, sorry?
So current lot coverage is 17 percent by structures, and you're going to be going as...
22.28 percent.
Up to 22. So usually when an applicant goes above the 20 percent in the special permit, we ask for some kind of a comparison with other... we ask for some kind of a comparison with other homes, you know, in, in the neighborhood.
Well, I can answer some of that. The previous neighbor, 47 Irving, has a 23 percent at their home. They also have a two-car garage directly across from me. I also understand that 37 Irving and 40, 37 Irving has 24 percent, and 40 Irving has 23 percent. Both of those houses are in view from my front yard. So there's three houses that I can see from my house that are greater than my 22 percent of the...
And you're a 22 feet 3 inches, the height limit in Falmouth is 35 feet, so you're well below.
And just for a comment, I understand, I respect the neighbor's opinion on this. I could've gone out further, I'm still 10 feet away. I could've gone another foot forward, I've tried to reduce the height of this house. My architect's given me many additions for this, so I was cognizant to try to reduce the lot coverage area. I put the stairs inside, which isn't optimum. I can fit a 15-foot cotter in the first bed, so that's not an optimum addition. So I just felt that I tried to do something for the neighborhood and not put a set of stairs on the outside of the house, which then I believe it would, it would have impacted the character of the neighborhood, 'cause I don't see a house in the neighborhood with a set of stairs. So I have made efforts to try to reduce the lot coverage, and I do believe it fits in with the neighborhood of where I'm at right now.
Okay, good, thank you for that. Is that it for public comment at this time? Does the board have any further questions?
No questions.
No questions.
If not, I'm happy to entertain a motion to close.
Motion closed.
Okay, Jerry? Jerry and TJ, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any further discussion on this project?
In the local area, there's two other, the staff put together, there's two others that are higher lot coverage than the one they're talking about here.
Out of how many?
I think it's 20.
Twenty, two or three.
And some others have more height?
Increase.
Second story, one-half story, different things.
A lot of them, if you drive out there, quite a few that are up there.
So it's the feeling of the board that this probably is in character of the neighborhood, or at least...
I don't think the, the bulk, yeah, it was in character.
If it was two stories, I guess it's not.
Okay. So if the consensus is that we're in favor of this, I just need a motion to have that fact.
At the whole house.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Does that affect them?
I'm sorry, what?
Jerry moves to approve.
I'll second it.
And Ed seconds, and then Jerry, if you can think of some findings?
Okay, the existing structure is, coverage is 17.25, and it's going up to 21.61 percent.
Twenty-two point oh four.
Twenty-two point 28 percent by structures.
Okay, I have a different thing in my plan here.
Are you looking at the existing or the proposed?
Let's see, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the...
You wanna look at the proposed?
Fourth, I'm looking at the fourth bullet that says 7.25.
Now, that's existing.
Oh, okay. Existing conditions. And then right below that, it says the... Oh, that was structures, okay, I see what you're saying.
Twenty-two point 28 percent of proposed structures.
Yes, 22.28.
And so there are several other structures in the, several other lots in the neighborhood that have larger lot coverage. By structures.
Yeah, if you guys look at the lot coverage in bulk that we prepared for you, it shows the land size, it shows the house size, the percentages of lots, whether they're one-story, one-and-a-half-story, two-stories in the general area. So we're still on findings, right?
Yep.
Do you wanna do under 240-3? Not any more detrimental?
Okay.
The intent to use it as an office, not a bedroom? And with the Board of Health having to sign off on it anyway?
No impact on the traffic flow, or minimal?
Actually, there wouldn't be any impact on the traffic flow because it's not a bedroom. So under 240-216E, that's what I would put.
It enhances the utilization of the property for the applicant?
Okay, and conditions?
Per plan?
Per plan, I think is pretty simple, I missed one.
And the second floor cannot be used for a bedroom? I know, that was in the finding.
It's a finding that it's not intended to be used, the Board of Health has the, well, look at the septic capacity before the sign-off for the building permit, so you can put that the finding is that there's three bedrooms, he did state that.
Yes, that's it. And will remain at three bedrooms.
We don't know what a septic capacity is, the board didn't ask that.
No, that's correct.
Well, there is a bathroom up there.
Right, you can have as many bathrooms as you want.
Okay. I'm sorry, was there a second to your motion?
Sure, yes, it was...
Yeah, add.
Okay, any further discussion on this one? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so that passes.
What, did somebody oppose him?
Yeah.
Good luck on the project.
You opposed him?
Yeah, but it's alright, it carries.
Oh, wait a minute, so let the record show that there is one opposition.
Yeah, me.
Oh. Alright.
Four to one.
You didn't say anything, Paul.
No, no, but I'm opposed to it.
Okay. Four to one, still carries. That brings us to our second new public hearing, which is 117-17 Del Cesto, 13 Russell Road in Falmouth.
Would you state who'll be sitting on this one as well, please?
And since Jerry said, oh, well, Rob's sitting on this one.
Brian, do you wanna, do you mind telling them to move away so we don't... Thank you, Brian.
Mail said?
Go ahead and read.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11, Chapter 48 of Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Raphael and Jennifer Del Cesto of Cohasset, Connecticut, Holchester, Connecticut, excuse me, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 243C and 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to remove portion of the dwelling consisting, or to construct additions and a partial second floor on the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as 13 Russell Road.
Can't close the door.
You can't close the door.
But you just have to ask them to move down the hall.
Thank you, Brian.
No comment from... Says there's a standard comments from the engineering department, and no other comments.
Okay.
And lot coverage is submitted to the file?
Right.
By the applicant?
And so here for the applicant, we have...
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower, and I'm an attorney here in Falmouth with Amen Clower Law Firm. Tonight, I am here representing Raphael and Jennifer Del Cesto, the owners of 13 Russell Road, and the applicant's in this matter. 13 Russell Road is located at the northern end of Falmouth Heights. It's on a lot of 7,650 square feet, and it's located in the residential C zoning district. As a little bit of background, the Del Cestos have owned this property since 2005, and they've found that the existing footprint and the layout are inadequate for their needs. The current house on the site is a one-story home with a footprint of 1,397 square feet and height of 15 feet 1 inches. There is also a pool on the site currently as well, and as well as a shed. This property is non-conforming to the provisions of the zoning bylaw. The dwelling is non-conforming to front yard setbacks being 21.3 feet where 25 feet is required. The pool is non-conforming to the rear yard setback being 8 feet 7 inches where 10 feet is required, and the side yard setback being 9 feet 2 inches where 10 feet is likewise required. It's non-conforming as to lot coverage by structures being 24.7 percent where 20 percent is allowed by right and up to 25 percent is allowed by special permit. And it's non-conforming as to lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking being 43.5 percent where 40 percent is allowed. The applicant is seeking to eliminate the westerly portion of the home, the area that presents essentially as a garage, but is in fact storage, small storage area access to those doors. They're seeking to add a small addition to both the north and the south side of the property and to add a second story over that newly expanded area. This proposal requires a special permit under Sections 240-3C and 240-69E of the zoning bylaw due to the existing non-conformities and the fact that the lot coverage by structures will remain over 20 percent. 240-3C allows for pre-existing non-conforming structures to be changed by special permit, provided that they are not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240-216 and whether or not this alteration creates a new dimension of non-conformity, impairs views of vistas, reasonably conform, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. What the applicant has proposed does not increase any of the existing, does not create any new non-conformities or increase any of the existing non-conformities. The addition, the proposed addition is not within the non-conforming setback area. It's set at least 25 feet from the street. The lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking is reduced from 43.5 percent to 42.8 percent. Lot coverage by structures will remain at 24.7 percent, but with the issuance of a special permit under 240-69E, that non-conformity will be eliminated. It's important to note that the lot coverage of this property was increased at a time when the lot coverage by structures and the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking were substantially higher than they are today. Specifically, the lot coverage by structures was allowed at 35 percent, and I believe it was, I believe it was 60 percent for lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking. That, that particular section of the bylaw changed within six months of this, the permit for the pool being issued. So the lot coverage non-conformity was conforming at the time it was created. The bedrooms in the property will remain at three. However, this property isn't a little pond sewer service area and could go as high as four by right as a product of being in that area. What's proposed is not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. There's no adverse effects, there's no new non-conformities. One of the existing non-conformities will be decreased. There's no impairment of views of vistas, and it conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. I did submit lot coverage calculations, as Ms. Boudreaux noted. The proposed footprint of this house is 1,392 square feet. Of the 42 nearby properties, 26 are larger. The average footprint is 1,807 square feet, which is over 400 square feet larger than what we're proposing. As to 240-69E, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure as opposed to the average size and height in the neighborhood, the effect of shadows on adjacent properties, the impact of you, on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on the coastal embayments. The proposed height of the structure, of the addition area, is going to be 20 feet 6 inches, essentially a one-and-a-half-story home. That addition is only over that expanded area. Again, of the 20, of the 42 homes in the area, 21 of them have at least one-and-a-half stories, if not two or more. The proposed gross building area of this structure is 1,672 square feet. This was fairly shocking to me, but of the 42 nearby homes, only one had a smaller square footage for gross building area. 41 of the 42 who actually had a larger gross building area. The average of those is 353 square feet, which is almost double the size of the proposed gross building area. There's no practical impact of shadow on adjacent properties. The increase to the height of the structure is only five feet, and it's only for a small portion of the home. There's no impact on views and vistas from public ways, and as a product of being on a sewer, there's no impact, there's no effect of nitrogen on the coastal embayments. Given this, it seems that this is a clearly appropriate addition and proposal, especially when you compare it to the average size and height in the neighborhood, as well as the other standards that are provided. For these reasons, I would ask that you grant the special permit. I'd be happy to address any questions you might have at this time.
Okay, let's see if anybody...
Mr. Chair, may I ask him a question first?
Of course.
I, I was writing, but did I hear you say that a non-conformity is being eliminated?
A non-conformity is being decreased.
Decreased, okay.
Lock coverage, lock coverage by structures, paving, and parking is being decreased.
Alright, thank you so much.
You did hear him say that. However, he said that by getting the special permit, it'll be eliminated, and I don't...
Oh, okay.
By, lock coverage by structures will be, with the issuance of a special permit, isn't considered a non-conformity.
I understand now, okay, thank you.
Okay, let's see if...
No question.
TJ?
The engineering referral mentions stormwater would have to be contained on the property either through drywells, rain garden, or other measures. I don't believe they were shown on the plans.
I mean, to the, to the extent drywells are required, or to the extent the engineer feels the drywells are appropriate, we're happy to add them as we've added in conditions in the past.
And I believe your testimony said that they were remaining at three beds. I thought I saw in the application that they were increasing from two to three beds.
I, I misstated that in my application, 'cause I didn't note that the garage room was counted as a guest bedroom on the existing plans. So the existing plans show a three-bedroom, and the proposed shows a two-bedroom.
And the shed that's on the property, will that be remaining?
That will be remaining. There is, there's no garage in the, the existing storage area, the front of the lot, the front of the house is being eliminated as part of this. So they'd like to keep the shed for storage purposes.
Okay, thank you. No questions?
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
Okay, and I don't think I have any questions. So let's see if there's anyone in the public wants to comment. Nope, don't see any hands. Okay, I think this one's fairly straightforward. Sarita, you have anything?
No, I don't, believe it or not.
I could play the lottery on my way home.
Uh, the shed, what's the size of the shed?
Forty-eight square feet.
Forty-eight, and what's its setbacks?
Presently, probably about two feet.
So it's non-conforming as well?
Yes.
Thank you. And any intent to move it?
I don't think there is, I don't think, but I'm not sure what kind of, I'm not sure what it's on, so I don't wanna say they...
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Okay. The board have sufficient information?
I think so.
Yes.
Is that a motion to close?
Make a motion to close.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded by Ed and Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Next step is to make a motion to either approve or not.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, TJ moves.
Second.
TJ moves, Ed seconds. TJ, you want to make any findings?
Sure. Do have some non-conformities, the front, rear, and side setbacks will be remaining, or they won't be increasing. I think it's important to note that the rear and the side setbacks are because of the pool. And Sarita did mention that the shed was two feet off the property line, or asked the question, so that's non-conforming as well. See, terms of lot coverage... Not sure if I'm gonna get this right, they are increasing to 24.7?
It's existing and it remains the same.
That's staying the same, this, like, coverage by structures is the same. They're actually reducing total lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking from 43.5 to 42.8, if I heard correctly. So that's worth noting.
Okay. They're going from two to three beds?
With the option, or they're hooked up to the sewer, that should be a finding that they have the... they have the capability of four.
Four, right. The engineering referral, the applicant mentioned that they were amenable to installing drywells or some sort of measure to prevent the stormwater. I think we'll do the usual condition while we'll get there. 240-216? And it enhances the utilization of the property for the homeowners.
Not more detrimental?
Not more detrimental. For plans? And, whatever language you use for the, for their own engineer with the, with the drywells?
Drywells as required to prevent rain.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so there we have the motion with conditions per plans and the addition of drywells as necessary to meet the concerns of the town engineer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Not taking any chances.
No.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not so sure I trust you right now.
Okay, I think it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, and that brings us to our third public hearing of the-
Nine.
119-17, Trottin, 51 Main Street, Falmouth, which is a special permit to allow the continued use of a bed and breakfast not previously permitted.
Wow.
Wait for the announcement.
Who's sitting, please?
On this one, Jerry.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11, Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that James M. Trottin, Falmouth, Mass. applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240, 28A of the Code of Falmouth to allow for the continued use of the existing bed and breakfast on subject property known as 51 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. And there's- The Historical Commission, the applicant is proposing, if the applicant is proposing any exterior changes or work, he needs to apply to the Historical Commission. And that's it, and there's- I thought it was 111.
No.
Three letters in support and one letter with no problems, no objection.
Okay.
Ready to go?
Good evening, I'm Jim Trottin. I live at 51 Main Street here in Falmouth. My wife, Maureen, and I own and operate the Innet City's Lane, located at the corner of Main Street and City's Lane across from the Village Green. We run a three-bedroom, bed and breakfast, all with private baths, and we can accommodate up to six guests and we do serve a full breakfast. We operate on a seasonal basis from around the beginning of May through the end of October. We have one-site parking for all of our guests at the rear of our property. While in a residential district, there are several other business or non-residential entities in the immediate area. The Captain Man is in, another B and B, is two houses away from us in a westerly direction on Main Street. St. Bartis Church Complex is three lots away from us in an easterly direction. Museums on the Green, Congregational Church, Bank of America and a dental office surround the green with a couple of other residential properties. My wife and I live there on a full-time basis. Letters of support have been submitted by neighbors and parties of interest who have been very supportive of us over the years. I believe you mentioned, I think there's five letters that have been submitted, one more was going to be submitted today, probably came in a little bit late to make the meeting. We have never had a complaint or any issue raised by any of our neighbors with respect to traffic, noise, lighting or any other concern. We have positive reviews from our guests listed on Tripadises, with 96 percent of the people have rated us as excellent, 4 percent, very good. In closing, I respectfully request approval of our special permit for continued use of the existing B and B. Any questions, please?
Okay, well, let's see.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
I have one or two.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kimberly.
The head is spoiling.
She's not yours, someone's. How long have you operated as a bed and breakfast?
This will be our 15th year.
And was it operated as a bed and breakfast before?
It was not.
And you took care of all the other questions I had, so that doesn't come in?
I guess the obvious question is, are you making any exterior, exterior changes?
There are no exterior changes that have, have been made or are planned to be made. The only thing we ever did was the, we put up a sign, we went before the sign committee for that and we replaced the fence that was out front and that we went before the Historical Commission for that and those are all a number of years in the past.
For the board's information, what happened to Mr. and Mrs. Trottin is they've been existing for 15 years, as have other B and Bs, unaware that they require a special permit. So, what the town is doing whenever we get referrals, I believe the zoning enforcement agent is reviewing files to ensure that everybody is properly permitted, which is why Mr. Trottin is here today.
This is simply that in a residential district, commercial accommodations are allowed by-
Any district, commercial accommodations are required a special permit, even in your business, so.
Okay, so that's the context. Let's just see if anyone has a comment? Nope, I don't think so.
Thank you.
The board wish to close?
Make a motion to close.
Second.
Okay, Ed and Paul moved to close the hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and any further discussion?
I mean, I just have one thing to add, in this age of Airbnb, for somebody to come forward and actually permit this, I think is admirable because, you know, I mean, lots of rooms and houses are rented on Airbnb and those folks don't go through any special permitting. These folks came forward and tried to make it right, so-
But at this place, you get breakfast.
Right, exactly, but aside from that, I think, you know, it's a, it's a nice proposal.
Okay, well, certainly all the letters in the file were very favorable, so.
It's a beautiful Airbnb.
So, that leads us to, I'm sorry, did you make a motion in favor?
I did.
Okay.
Well, no, no, I didn't. I'd like to make a motion to grant the special permit.
Thank you.
Okay. Moved by Paul, seconded by TJ. Any further discussion on this motion before we vote it?
How about some findings before you vote it?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Well, let's find that there was a number of le, I actually counted five letters in the file, I don't know if I was wrong, that were in favor. And that there's no changes proposed for the exterior that addresses the concerns of the Historic Commission.
Continued operation of existing working-
I think that's a good finding.
Operation.
Been going 15 years. And then in terms of conditions, I guess they keep going as they have, I guess.
Or plans.
Yeah.
I think you should make a finding that they live on the property.
Okay. We find that they live on the property. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Okay.
And I made the best chocolate chip cookies in town.
You split the dough, you put them out.
Chita.
Thank you.
And the Brits.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Hope you have a great season. Okay, so, our fourth public hearing for the evening is 120-17. Pesca Salido, 10 Leonard Drive, East Falmouth, a special permit to construct a family room addition.
And who is sitting, please?
And on this one, it's Rob.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11, Chapter 48, Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Peter A. and Mary Ann Pesca Salido-
Pescadillo.
Pescadillo, I'm sorry. Of Vernon, Connecticut, applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit under Section 243C of the Code of Falmouth to construct a family room addition to a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as 10 Leonard Drive.
Okay, and no comments in the referral section.
Good evening, John Bydell, I'm representing Peter Pescadillo. The reason we do, obviously we've got a setback issue on the front yard, the existing step just happens to be in the setback. The structure itself is within the 25 feet of the step, but I think it's on 23 feet. This addition will be on the rear of the house, so I have no effect on the setback in front.
And there's no lot coverage issues?
No.
Okay, pretty simple-
Yeah.
-project. Anybody have any questions?
No. No questions.
Any comments from the public? Okay.
This is something that I've asked before.
They're getting easier.
Maybe. Don't jinx it.
I'd certainly entertain a motion to close the hearing. See if everyone's satisfied, they have enough information.
Second it.
Seconded and made.
I seconded, I think, I don't know.
Oh, you're not seconding it, you're making it.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, I second.
There you go. Paul and Ed, all in favor?
Aye.
And now, motion to approve? I presume?
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the special permit.
Is there a second?
Oh, second it.
Okay, any findings?
The only nonconformity is the front steps.
There you go.
240-3, not more detrimental? No opposition in file?
Right.
Okay.
It's in the back of the house, you can't see it from the screen.
Ready to vote?
How about some conditions?
Conditions?
Is there a game?
Per plan, as per plan.
Simple as plans has ever seen.
Okay, and then all in favor, yes?
All in favor, okay, yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Thank, thank you for your time.
It was a can of corn.
Ken, are you okay? Would you like some water or something?
I don't think at all. Our last public hearing for tonight is Mills, 69 Montauk Street. That's oh, double oh seven, really, double oh seven, dash one eight. Are you Mr. Bond?
James Bond.
Okay. Who's sitting on this one?
Read that. Rob, no, sorry, Cherry's on it.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11, Chapter 48, the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that Sharon Mills, Ooford, North Carolina, applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 243C of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as 69 Montauk Street.
Okay.
Wait for referrals and-
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
There's not a game.
He's trying to survive.
Just saying.
The only comment was 1962 service connection is 56 years old, location of new water service would need to be submitted to the Water Department for approval. And there's one letter, no opposition.
Now, I guess we're ready for your input.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and guests. I'm here in representation of Ms. Sharon Mills, who is seated in front of you. We've applied to the Board for a special permit pursuant to Section 243C to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing nonconforming dwelling in 69 Montauk, T-Ticket. Ms. Mills' parents bought the house back in 1960, it had two very small bedrooms, and the family spent as much time there as possible. Post-Miss Mills and her sister have lived there over the years and Ms. Mills took ownership of the prop in the late 90s. She frequents the property, summers with her granddaughter cousins and other family. With the betterment of town sewer, Ms. Mills now has the ability and opportunity to reconstruct the dwelling that will really suit her family's needs and they can enjoy it for many more years to come. So, the property is a 3,200 square foot lot with a single-family ranch-style dwelling. The pre-existing nonconformities are lot coverage by structure, front setback, right-side setback. The proposed new dwelling will improve all the nonconformities. The lot coverage by structure will be reduced from 839.5 square feet, which is 26.2 percent.
33.5.
So, they're going to take it down to 789.3, which will put it under the 25 percent, make it 24.67 percent. The front setback will be improved from 16 feet to 16.4 feet and the right-side setback will be improved from 8.9 feet to 9.6 feet. Note that the left setback is conforming and is not intended to change. The rear setback is conforming and will remain as such. The existing setback is 22.2 and they're actually, the proposed setback will be 23.3. Also, there's a shed in the right rear of the lot, which will be removed and not replaced. So, working with such a small lot and trying to improve all the nonconformities presented several, you know, obstacles for the architect to overcome during the design. There's an extremely large oak tree, if you'll note on the plan, 38-inch caliber. I mean, she's, that's a big one, the canopy is bigger than the entire house. So, that really restricts moving the house any farther back because of that straight from that.
Got you.
The narrowness of the lot is also, I mean, they designed a house that's 19.67 feet wide, which as everybody knows is, is not typical at all for the width of a house. But again, with all these things, a lot of hard work with the architect, they were able to create a dwelling which stays entirely within the existing footprint and improves all the nonconformities.
How many bedrooms, Brian?
It's proposed three. Two?
Two.
Two bedroom.
Okay.
And again, she has the betterment for town sewer, but it's proposed as a two-bedroom.
Okay, let's see if there's board questions. Rob, you want to start?
Just about, what's, what's the total height?
The total height is 33 foot nine.
Is there a basement?
Yes. Yes, there is a basement.
And you are removing the shed then that's there on the property because of the basement?
Correct, it will be removed and not replaced.
That's, that's all I have.
I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
TJ?
Are you in a FEMA flood zone at all?
No, we are actually in a X, which is a non-hazard flood zone, not in a flood.
No question?
Okay, well, I do have a question. The main thing I noticed when I went into, into down this street was that this building will tower over all the other structures. It will still be, have a small footprint, but it will be very tall. And I noticed you, you have a pretty steep root ditch and I'm wondering, do you really need all of that? all of this?
I think that question can be answered if the architect doesn't mind. And I do understand where your question with the tall pitch on the roof. I mean, as we know, the 339, it is within...
I mean, as you said, it's a narrow house, and now you're going to have this very steep peak, 10 feet, going from the, what's that? To the crest from the...
No, I understand, but I mean, it is, I mean, as the sewer comes in, it'll be built up, I think in 2003 across the street, they did that raise and rebuild.
There is a new master, but I doubt it's 33 feet tall.
No.
And you know, it's not a model. So anyway, if, yeah, if Chris, if either the applicant or Chris wants to address this... But you do have to come up to the podium.
I'm Sharon Mills. When I was first thinking about redoing the house, I was considering having the attic be more living space. And then gradually, I realized that I didn't really need that much space, and it would be too expensive. So I changed around, took off the dormers and so on. But when I looked at the options that Chris presented of three different roof heights, the other two, you know, the lesser peaks, just kind of looked kind of silly on that tall house. So I guess, I mean, I guess we could go to a lower elevation or whatever it's called. But when I first looked at them, it just kind of looked like a little teeny hat on a tall house or something. It didn't look right to me. But it doesn't really make any difference if we wanted to go back.
I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I think if you could lower it even four feet...
Well, it's 20 feet wide, 12 pitch, that is 10, so you're going up 10. So to knock it four feet would be quite a bit, and we take into what she's saying there, which is visually apparent, it's going to look disproportionate to have such a small pitch.
So I'd be eager to hear what Chris, do you have anything? Give us some feedback.
Chris Warner, I'm the architect on the project, and as Sharon and I went through the process, we looked at a number of different schemes. And this was the one she liked. And so we're asking for your special permission to give her the scheme that she really likes. We looked at, actually rotated the ridge so it wouldn't be as high on the street, and tried a bunch of dormers, and tried eight pitch, tried a bunch of different looks. And we both feel that this is the tightest, most elegant scheme for that restricted lot that it's actually going to be really nice. It's going to meet their needs, and, you know, it's a 35 feet is allowed. I'm seeing houses that are in flood plains going up and then having to have roofs that aren't very nice because of the 35-foot limitation and trying to get two stories in. Fortunately, this is high enough, it's a 20-foot elevation, so that's not a constraint. You know, there is a lifting of the foundation a little bit on this project, but that's to get the water view that they've had her whole life. And she's got an opportunity, and we're just asking for permission to give her what she wants.
Again, the, since you're asking to go above 20 percent, the criteria we have doesn't fit into the neighborhood.
It's already above 20 percent.
I understand, but...
It's coming down to 25 percent. And, you know, we've walked down to, you know, down the street...
Right now, it's above 20 percent, but it's one story, very small, you know, very tiny house. This is going to be a substantially larger structure, there's a lot more bulk. And when I looked at it, I thought, wow, that's going to be, that's going to look very tall relative to every other house on the street. It's my opinion, I don't know if any other folks on the board looked at it or had any feelings about it?
Well, I can understand lowering it, I just don't know what physically it would look like with the lowered roof line. If it looks like it's going to be squat, then...
You know, if you lower it two feet, I mean, something.
I mean, you could lower your walls.
You know, I think if it was living space, it would be one, this is attic space.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
And as the applicant said, they're, they looked at other particularations.
What's the use for the attic space? Because it didn't, there's none existing.
What's the use for the attic space?
It's just a pull-down stair, it's unconditioned space.
Is there a basement now?
No.
But you're putting in a basement, so you have added storage that you don't have existing versus doing a basement and an attic.
I mean, you could lower your second floor wall heights, right?
What, Paul?
You could lower your second floor wall heights.
Well, you know, I don't want to make them hunch over, you know, if they're...
They can, it has to be a certain height according to building.
Yeah.
Has to be 73, I believe.
I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing that out there, I mean.
It's a, you know, down, when soul Tom Renshaw, he doesn't do anything less than a 12 pitch, not to bring Tom...
These are nine foot, each story is nine feet. What's striking me is that going from the beginning of the roof to the ridge, it's 10-10, 11 feet. I just think it doesn't need to be that tall, and you could make it fit better into the neighborhood. But we'll see if anyone agrees with us.
Don't we know it?
Okay. I don't know if anyone else out there wants to say anything? If not, I think we probably...
What, did the board want to discuss the...
Have some discussion.
Okay. What are you, let's start with Rob and see what y'all think.
Well, I think it would, it would look better a little lower, and if it's just attic space and they do already have basement storage, you know, as long as they can work it in so that visually, it just doesn't look odd with the pitch that they use.
Mr. Chairman, would the board be amendable to, if we reduce it to a 10 pitch? So we're taking two inches per foot, so at 10 feet times two, that's coming down almost two feet. I mean, now you're at 339, you're down to almost 31, it'll be like 31-11, that's...
Yeah, well, let's, we'll go with it. Okay, so that's one proposal to take to a 10 pitch, down to like 31 feet. Paul?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's all right. Why so, yeah, okay. I'm just, what, do you have a high water table there?
No, they said they're up at 20...
Just, there's a lot of foundation showing, though.
I think the intent at that time was more for the view line, for the sight line.
Yeah, they're trying to get it pissed out.
Okay.
Not because of...
So that's another possibility is to take a, what do you got there, you got?
311.
Take six inches off of that.
Get you down under 30 moment.
So I, just suggesting that we, you lower it a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it's very tall.
Because it's, not only is it very tall, but it's a single, you know, box, and so there's no real...
Because of the size of the lot.
Yeah, and it's pretty narrow, as you said, it's a narrow house. So now you've got this narrow thing shooting in.
I'd like to hear what the other board members have seen, and I think we can come to some amicable agreement.
I agree, I think it ought to come down a little bit. And I would suggest, you know, smaller window, bring it down, whatever it is, approximately two feet, and then put a smaller window, because right now, this space is bigger than each of the floors.
Yeah, exactly.
Kind of, you know, it's just, and it's still giving the view that they want from the second floor or the first floor. That's where I was coming from.
So I think, yeah. TJ?
Right, if they're amenable to maybe 10 and 10 instead of 12 by 12 for the roof, that's fine. And I was thinking maybe attacking it from the opposite side of the house, the basement side. You have, it's three foot 11 to the basement ceiling, and then if you look at the, is this the second sheet? If you look at the second sheet, it says it's eight foot seven to the first floor, so if you can chop off something on, down there, maybe that could get us under.
Let's see, I think the way to do that is just to say, what's the upper limit on the house?
Right.
And let them figure out how to, you know, if it's 30 feet six inches, 31 feet, let's see, right now, they're proposing 339, 31 feet.
If we go, I'm sorry. If we go to the 10-10, reduce the foundation by, did you say six inches? Well, that was a suggestion that I think it came from.
Six inches was suggested.
What would be the total height now?
I mean, you're going to lose 20 inches plus six, so you're going to go down two foot two, so 33, foot nine, and end up with 31.7 approximately.
Seems to be a reasonable compromise. I mean, this is a unique structure, there's no scaling opportunity.
Do you want to just, I think your idea of the board picking a height 30.5...
Right.
Whatever, and giving them until March 1st to bring it back, I think is, I think it's better instead of discussing this, because I'm not going to administratively review these plans.
That's fair.
So I think if you can...
So you'd like us, are you saying you'd like us to continue it?
Well, I'm suggesting, I'm not saying I'd like you to, I'm suggesting, there's different variations here. I suggest you give it to Brian, who's very competent to figure out what to do, and Chris Warner, excuse me, Chris, that's the architect. Pick your height.
Yeah.
And let them come back March 1st.
So do we have a...
It's only two weeks, or less than two weeks, right?
31.5.
Less than two weeks.
We go for that.
Sorry.
31.5.
I mean, if that matches the 10-10 and six inches.
So do you want to give that to him and then bring it back, revise...
Yeah.
The plan and bring it back March 1st for your approval? Shouldn't take more than 15 minutes, hopefully.
Okay.
Can we be first then?
Because March 1st is a, is a busy hearing, very busy. It can't be done by the first.
15th, 15th was fine, I think.
I, I'm sorry, I'm lost, what's going on?
March 15th, you'd prefer?
Through the chair, basically, the architect is asking for more time to revise the plan.
All right, so let's have a motion to continue this to March 15th with...
At 6 o'clock then?
At 6 o'clock there in town hall.
Thank you.
I make the motion to continue hearing number 00718 to March 15th at 6 o'clock.
Okay, and come back with a height reduction.
Did somebody second that?
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you very much for your time. Just to be clear, 31.5 is the number you guys are shooting.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, for your information, I have no minutes because I've been a little busy. So the draft minutes, I'll get to you soon, from the 8th of February, and I'm sure Meg will have this one long before the 1st, okay? So if that's all right with you, we're still having...
Yeah, we've got to continue on with our open portion of our meeting, so great if you guys want to talk, but...
Okay, next on the agenda?
Okay, so we have a request for board administrative determination. I like de minimis for setback at 202 Quaker Row.
This house was constructed in 1954. It'd be in 10 of a 10-foot setback, but of course, as you know, our instruments have gotten a lot more sophisticated, and because they wanted to do something, they found out that it's 9.7 and 9.6, so they're asking for the board to determine a de minimis.
What are we doing? So it's been there how many years?
So there's an existing...
Since 1954.
1954.
But why do we care about it?
Because it doesn't need the 10-foot, it's 9.7, 9.6.
They're trying to get it to be conforming.
Oh, we...
If you declare it as de minimis, then...
Oh, really?
It'll be still considered conforming to the standard.
No, it hasn't due because the engineering instrumentation's changed over the years.
So we can make the determination that it's conforming?
Primarily, I believe it's...
If it's off by just a tiny little bit.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I've just never heard of anything like that. That's really nice.
We've done it before.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care.
Not for very much, I'm telling you.
Three inches. I, should I make a motion that we approve the de minimis?
I think 9.6 is the least we've ever gone.
Okay, so Jerry is proposing, this is a nine foot, seven inches, is it?
9.6 and then...
So point seven, not seven inches, point seven, I mean, foot.
And 9.6, there's two.
So it's about six inches off.
So I just have a question. So if we deem it de minimis and therefore conforming, what are they, what are they...
Now, if they want to do some...
Okay.
Thing that doesn't trigger any...
Special permitting?
...special permit criteria, they don't have to come before us.
Oh, that's nice. Yeah, I mean, hey, that's great.
Okay, so Jerry has moved that we approve this as de minimis.
I'll second.
And TJ's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We get the drawings for this package?
What, Chris?
I think we gave him too much. Okay, next, item as usual, his procedural rules, and I don't think there's anything to talk about there, is there?
No, there never is. Are we going to have that...
There never has been for three years.
At the board meeting in the workshop, 2024.
I'm not complaining, it's just a continual...
Yeah, I think we'll go after the procedures at our...
Workshop?
Workshop on the 24th.
Right, but nobody's sent me anything yet, so...
24.
Again, ask the board to send me any changes to the procedures that they want to discuss.
So we all have, you all have a copy of the procedure?
Yes.
I've been carrying it around for two years.
It's on the website as well.
Okay, then there's, that's, oh, actually, we're already there, board discussion update, workshop agenda, is there anything else?
There was something, I can't remember what I was going to bring up.
Is there going to be a flooding fee discussion?
Ken, you should make the determination that you made regarding Mr. Dubin on the...
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to, I thought future, well, yes, I can talk about that. Oh, there's, yeah. So another thing is Julian Susso has asked that we appoint someone to work on the accessory apartment consulting committee, I guess we would call it.
It's a very, very short committee.
Representatives, it's an ad hoc committee, they're going to have apparently three meetings to talk about modification of the bylaw, and Robert expressed some interest in doing it, so if you guys are all okay with that, let's agree that he'll be our representative.
I think that's great, you volunteer.
Let's say I volunteer again.
Can I see those twist marks on your arm?
Okay, so that takes care of that, I don't think we need a vote, do we need a vote?
No, because it was your appointment.
Okay, power's an appointment, I feel like Trump. Future agenda items, are there any? Okay, if not, meeting adjourned.
Is this an off-time, Chris?
No.